Board of Selectmen meeting, January 27, 2014. Would you kindly stand and join us in slitting the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public announcements, does any members have public announcements? One from the town clerk would like to inform the residents that the annual town meeting will be April 7, 2014, and the town elections are Saturday, April 26, 2014. There will be three positions on the Board of Assessors, Board of Health, two positions on the Board of Selectmen, Housing Authority, Library Trustees, there's two positions, three positions, park and record, two positions, one position on the Planning Board, two positions on the School Committee, two positions on the School Committee, and one position on Town Clerk, town, one position Town Moderator, three positions of trustees of Memorial, Veterans Memorial, and one position on the Water Commissioner. And again, any resident that is interested, you can either talk to the town clerk, we certainly respect anybody that wants to come forward and serve the town, so thank you. Okay. Public announcement, at 6:35, we have a request for a livery license at 22 Lantern Lane. Ted Cummings, Mr. Cummings, would you like to come forward, please?
Mike, I'm going to recuse myself because Ted's an abbotus.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dory, Mr. Burbine's going to recuse himself. Okay, Ted, what do we got?
I just purchased a vehicle and I'd like to get a livery license to do mostly airport transfers from the Abington area. I've been driving livery for about 20 years and decided it's time to get my own car, so that's where we are. Best livery transportation, one car, we parked at 22 Lantern Lane.
Okay. Any questions to the board? I see that documents from public safety and zoning officer, building inspector, and everything seems to be in order.
I just had a question, Ted, or Rick, does this, does your abbotus list get involved here, are the abbotus notified on this?
No.
Okay.
Not required.
Would you say, Ted, most of your neighbors know this is happening, or?
I can't speak for them, but I've been parking cars in my driveway for other companies I've been working for, for the last seven years, and I haven't had any complaints.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions? I'll make a motion and approve. Your motion?
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, it's unanimous. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you, folks.
Ted, can I ask if anybody's interested in your business, how would they contact you?
Well, I happen to have some business cards here if you'd like.
You come prepared.
It's a frame.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck, Ted.
Mr. Coyle gets a special one with the lion's discount.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Mr. Deion gets two because they're stuck together.
Okay.
Andy recused himself, he still got one. Thank you, folks.
Good luck.
Give that to all my friends.
Could I make a comment here, Mr. Jim?
Absolutely.
I received some feedback from residents of the town who have had to apply for different licenses, including this one and my brother's restaurant license, just some, I don't know how to explain it, but it's more complicated than they think it is. When they come in, they're told different things, and then, what I'd like to see is maybe the town institute a policy, maybe other towns have it already, but when they come to have a license, there'd be a piece of paper saying, "This is how you apply for a common vic license," or "This is how you apply," the whole, all steps, maybe the timeframe, who they need to talk to, the numbers, you know, the selectman meet this time, because it's confusing. I know when my brother applied for his restaurant license a year and a half ago, he thought he was done when he went to the Board of Health, but little did he know he had to, you know, come before us, and it was really a tight situation because he was planning on opening the day before he met with us. So, I'd just like to maybe, you know, because if you come to the town hall, you talk, you might be talking to a different person every day, you know, to town clerk, or someone in the selectman's office, or maybe it's a sub, I'd like to have, say, "Come on in, we've got a whole sheet and all the rules and what the process in tight entails," so maybe if town manager go into that.
Yeah, I think we can certainly search our peers and throughout the state. I presume somebody has, at least for the licenses that tend to, that are more likely to show up, some of them are fairly obscure, but for the most part, we can at least see what's out there, and we hate to reinvent the wheel, but we can see what's out there and see if we can put something together.
You know, I agree with Mr. Coyle wholeheartedly that some of the licenses that we give out, I think the person comes, they fill out the application, you have the license, they're not aware that they have to pay for all these fees, all these inspection fees that come forward, the fire department, the police, I believe each one carries a specific electrical, you know, I mean, they're all, so by the time you're done, you know, you go into town hall, you figure you're done with whatever it costs, $100 or something like that, but effectively, you really are just beginning because now you have to go through these inspections, and if it isn't up to snuff, you have to pay sometimes, I believe, I don't know all of the laws, but I think you have to believe for a follow-up inspection, it can get quite costly, so in an effort to encourage business and to make it more comfortable, I would certainly support that.
And I think the issue would be primarily new businesses, because obviously people that have been, like builders, know the system.
Right.
For the most part, you know, residents don't. New businesses, people seeking to do business, they would not necessarily know any nuances between Abington and any of the other communities that they may have done business in, so.
Even simple things like if someone wants to come in and redo their deck, you know, I mean, what's the process?
This is government, there's nothing simple.
No, there isn't, there isn't.
No, but it's true, there are a lot of good reasons for a lot of, obviously for the regulation oversight, but it can be more than people, people understand.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, is any other comment on that, or? That's fine. Okay, right, open special town meeting warrant and close special town meeting warrant on March 3, 2014, open the annual town meeting warrant and close the annual town meeting warrant on February 18, 2014. Rick, would you like to comment on that, or?
Well, the intent, obviously, is to gear towards the annual town meeting on time, whether or not that's going to be practical based, especially in light of what we've just, the information we just received with regard to the finance, state finances and municipal finance. However, we have tried to at least provide enough opportunity for us to process the town meeting in a timely fashion in case that we have the opportunity to do that. As you can see, the dates are a little different because of the posting requirements for a special town meeting versus an annual town meeting, well, actually not the posting requirements, but the administrative requirements and putting together an annual town meeting warrant, so. That's about all I can say, I mean, as you see, this year after year. We do already have a folder of people, for individuals started for submissions, so even though it's technically not open yet, people have already, you know, provided some of the, you know, stuff you see every year, so, so that's our goal.
Okay. And as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I believe, we don't have to have signatures like this, two articles in particular, one addressing the quorum issue and one addressing quarums on boards being appointed going forward, you know, whether or not we'd need a quorum from the board when we have a joint meeting to try to resolve some of those issues. Is that something where we need 10 signatures, or can we just go through the office and do that?
Well, the board can submit any articles you would like.
Okay, so even, it has to come from the board, I mean, it can come from an individual member and then vote it on, that's what, I guess what the point is.
So you're trying to bypass the rest of us, is that what you're saying?
No, no, I just.
The answer is, in a sense, if I could, you know, just, if a member of the board submits, submits an article, that's fine, but keep in mind that the full board will review the warrant to determine whether or not it stays on, so.
But you don't need, you don't need the signatures and?
No, you don't.
That's the question, and yes, I would like to bypass.
In theory, if the Board of Selectmen as a whole kicks off your article, Mike, you could still go out if you had time and get it, and get your own petition article, but...
Well, maybe, maybe I should get the signatures right now.
I might want to get it in.
Just show your hand.
I can only imagine what it is, but.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
I'd make a motion to open the special town meeting warrant, close it on March 3, and open the annual town meeting warrant and close it on February 18.
Motion by Andy.
Second.
Second by Kenny. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Tom?
Again, why do we close the annual on February 18 as opposed to March 4, 3? Why wouldn't you give people more time to submit?
Sure. Well, typically, the special town meeting is for housekeeping issues, and they tend to keep arising as you get closer and closer to town meeting, but the annual town meeting is for appropriations, and the monies that we have is the monies that we have, so we close the warrant on the annual town meeting because there is only so much appropriation. Yeah, and the special town meeting is situations that arise as you get closer to the end of the fiscal year, you realize you need to submit articles for transfers and things, which is not appropriating funds, it's just general housekeeping, so we keep that warrant open longer because more things arise as you get closer to town meeting.
What would be the issue to synchronize it on the 3? I mean, is that an issue, or?
I don't, I don't think it would be a big issue. I think the, you know, the biggest problem is that, you know, your annual town meeting warrant is a much bigger document, it just takes longer to put together, you know, the special town meeting, you usually only get a few articles, so the goal, as Dory mentioned, is just to keep it open a little longer for those last-minute housekeeping details, but I don't know if it's a big, big deal if you synchronize it, I don't think.
I've just heard from residents before, they question why is it, you know, a three-week process for the annual, which may be perceived as more important?
Yeah.
And a five-week process for the special.
No, it's not a, I can, I guess I can understand the point if you're from the outside looking in, it really, it's just an administrative issue and how, you know, again, you're talking about putting together a fairly significant warrant versus a fairly small warrant, and the time and energy it takes to do that, and as Dory pointed out, housekeeping, you might get an extra article or two, but nothing that's going to create any major, you know, legal review needs or anything like that. If you'd like to, if you really want to synchronize those, I'm not, we wouldn't be overly disappointed, but that's the reason, that's the reason.
I think, I think the biggest difference, obviously, would be if there was a petition article to go on the annual warrant, it's 10 signatures, and if it's on the special, it's 100, so.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, right.
So that would be the biggest difference to somebody, you know, in the general public service.
And you still need to meet the deadline.
That's by bylaw.
No, but what was the rationale with that?
I don't know, I had no idea.
That's a state law.
Is it state law?
That's state law, yes.
It is.
Yeah, and, and you, but even though you get a petition, you can't, you can't require the selectmen to reopen the warrant for a petition article, you can petition for a whole new town meeting, so if you set a deadline for the special town meeting, for instance, and a petition article comes in the next week, that's too bad. That can go on a future town meeting warrant, but it can't, you have to, even a petition has to meet your deadline.
Yeah, okay. All set? Okay, so, we had a motion, did we vote on that?
Not yet.
Okay, we had a motion by Mr. Burbine, second by Mr. Coyle. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that's unanimous.
Can you maybe just post that on the website, too, that the warrant is open and?
Yeah.
Thanks.
And item number two is request to spend above the allocated $100,000 snow and ice budget. Rick, would you like to comment?
I will be giving you a, forwarding a written memo from the Highway Department Superintendent probably tomorrow, but essentially, as we stand right now, and I know this is rather parliamentary, but going into this last storm prior to the purchase of materials, we were approximately $60,000 beyond the $100,000 appropriation. Mr. Kane is anticipating after this last storm, including the materials, the town will be approximately $150,000 over the $100,000 appropriation, so keep in mind, the last five years, historically, the town has spent in total about $400,000, I mean, on average, about $400,000, so to the extent that we are on budget, it's really not a discussion that's appropriate to this, this particular item, but the more we can certainly stay, you know, within or underneath the historic spending would be, would be good, but we still have, as you know, February, and we know it doesn't snow in March, so that won't be an issue. But the Finance Committee did at their meeting last week, did also make the approval, I know Maureen spoke to you, Mike, prior to doing that, too, so.
Okay, I know last year we had a discussion about, I think it was you, Mr. Burbine, about raising the amount of money we put in there.
Yeah.
And it could a little bit soften the burden, a little bit, because $100,000 is just really out of the.
Right. I think to the extent that we can at least start getting fiscal year bills in the fiscal year that they, that they should be in would be helpful and move toward, and the Finance Committee supportive also of trying to move that upwards, you know, incrementally over a period of time, but as you know, the budgetary process can be difficult, and when it's between moving that from 100,000 to 200,000 versus, you know, perhaps a teacher or a police officer, I mean, those are the decisions ultimately we're all in a position of having to make, so, so it's not, I wouldn't call it, it's not negligence that the town has a relatively low budget, it's just the realities of the time, so hopefully, we can make a small dent each year over the next several years to get that into a little bit more realistic.
Personally, I think that's very important, only because, again, last year, we were in this situation, we had to reach into the stabilization account, and I don't want to make that a trend, so.
Yeah.
Probably voted this up last year a little bit, a little bit.
No, we looked at it.
Initially had it, maybe it got pulled.
I think it's been increased from 80,000 to 100,000, I think, a couple of years ago, I don't know if it was just last year, but.
It was a few years ago, I think.
So, I know, and I presume the goal was to try, try to continue to do that again over five, 10 years.
I think you're right.
But, so, we could.
So for the FY 2015 budget, how much did you allocate under that expense item?
The?
100 still?
For the?
The proposed?
The next fiscal year?
Yeah.
Well, we don't have a proposed budget yet. In the conceptual overview that I gave you at the last meeting, we were presuming $200,000 with, with the need for an over expenditure still of another $200,000 to get to the average that we've, over the last five years, so trying to get, again, trying to shift the burden into the fiscal year in which it's incurred. Whether or not that's possible to make that much of an aggressive push this coming fiscal year, it's too early to tell, and as you are all aware of, the governor's proposed local aid package doesn't provide us with a whole lot of ability to do much, so, so we'll have to wait and see how this plays out.
Okay.
You need a vote on it?
Yes.
Yes, please.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Deion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burbine. Any further discussion? Yes.
Do we put a limit on it, or is it just basically, yeah, you're allowed to spend over the budget?
That's.
I think that's what it is.
That's what you get to do.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that's unanimous. Item three is vote, vote to process the vacancy, possible temporary appointment of two members of the Board of Assessors. I read the vacancy notice, there are currently three vacancies on the Board of Assessors. If you are interested in being appointed by the Board of Selectmen to a temporary position on the Board of Assessors till the upcoming election on April 26, 2014, please send a letter of interest and qualifications to Dory Jameson, Assistant Town Manager, 500 Glenwood's Way, Abington, or you may email the letter of interest and qualifications to djamison@abingtonmass.gov. This letter is interested, the letter of interest must be received, not later than 10 days from the posting. I don't know if you want to comment on that, Rick?
Well, as everyone's aware, we do have three resignations on the Board of Assessors. The charter requires, or calls for the appointment of vacancies within 14 days as, from advertisement, and also allows, requires that people submit applications within 10 days of the advertisement, so tonight would effectively be the advertisement date of those positions, so the goal would be at the next meeting of the Board of Selectmen that we can appoint two, if not three, but at least a quorum to get through to the next election. In the meantime, the deputy assessor has made a written request to the Department of Revenue to ask what functions that he can administer personally without the Board of, what have been traditionally been Board of Assessor functions, for, and the example that I think would be helpful is for the certification of a abbotus notices, those are generally signed off by the board, but realistically, that's more of an administrative, ministerial function, so that's the kind of guidance Jack is seeking from the Department of Revenue in the meantime, just in case in the next 14 days, there has to be, he has to handle something along those lines.
Okay. Questions?
I just, I just have one, so the, the selectmen would, would appoint, hopefully, at least two, if not three, if we had enough qualified applicants. My question is come April 26, will each of those members that have been temporarily appointed, I'm assuming we're going to, for the election, have a term of one year, two year, three year, will they basically select what term if they decide to run for the office? Are we appointing to one of those terms?
Yeah, you're only appointing until this election.
Right.
Until the coming election, and then people would, when they pull their papers, they would pull their papers for one of those terms that are being identified. And if there are, isn't enough, and one of, historically, as you know, not just in the charter, but in Mass general law, that the Board of Selectmen and the remaining members of the elected board would make a joint appointment, but obviously, where there's no members left, it's solely the Board of Selectmen's vote at this point. If there's still vacancies after the next election, then once again, you'd be making a joint vote until the following election, but hopefully, those positions will be filled appropriately during, at April, but there's obviously not a lot of time, people have until a date in March to pull papers, so there's plenty of time for interested parties to think about running, but obviously, our concern is getting to that point, meeting all the legal requirements of the town, particularly with regard to abatement applications.
And the second question is, you don't feel, based on what you've heard to date, that the appointed members need to be certified, they have up to two years?
That's correct.
Once appointed to be certified, so they can act on abatements?
Yes.
And exemptions between now and the 26th?
Correct. That's what we've been informed by Town Council.
Okay.
Okay. Ken?
At our last meeting, we voted not to fill a position on the Board of Health because there's such a short window between now and the election. This is something that has to be done?
Correct. Well, not has to.
Well, it, well, I guess from a legal standpoint, you don't have to do it, the problem is, there's business that only the assessors can act on, for instance, if somebody files an abatement, and, Tom, if you want to outline the process for an abatement.
Yeah, I think, I think the issue that we need to consider is, we're in a season of exemptions and abatements. Exemptions is something that the legislature grants a class of people, typically veterans. An abatement is when a resident property owner doesn't feel that the town's assessment, when you apply for at least the abatement, there's three actions, either the assessors approve, or deny, or they deem denied. If the assessors don't act, it's either in 60 or 90 days, it's deemed denied, so if you don't have anybody there to act on it, you potentially have a whole class of, you know, people filing for abatements that won't be acted on, and hence, I don't believe they'll...
Yeah, it's 90 days, and it's, you're correct, it's basically, I think constructive denial would be the.
Yeah.
Term, and that's, you're right, that's not fair to people that have legitimate.
And the deputy assessor cannot do an abatement?
He cannot, no. Again, the department, he's asked the Department of Revenue for input, but I don't think we can presume at this point that a function like that should even be left to that type of position, you know?
Especially, he's the one who's making the assessment initially, so.
That, that is true, yes, so.
The abatement wouldn't make a lot of sense.
And even though he would probably, you know, makes, I know that he makes a recommendation to the board whether to abate or not, it's still, you know, on the surface, makes sense that somebody who didn't make that decision initially is, and the fact that those are decisions that are made by elected representatives of the town is important, so, and although these people will be appointed, you are elected, so that's the conveyance.
Okay.
Yep.
If not, I'd accept a motion to process the Board of Assessors vacancy and possible temporary appointments, and I'd also like to include to send a letter of appreciation for their service to the town.
To the three.
To the three.
Resigning members.
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Burbine. Second. Second by Mr. Deion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that's unanimous. Item four is to vote, the Board of Selectmen investigated complaint of water issues on 26 Highland Road. Would you like to handle that, Rick?
Well, in the, in your packet, there's some information, some emails submitted by resident in that area, and the question arises as to, you know, what authority does the town have to pursue these types of issues, and there's a question as to the applicability of the zoning bylaw, but there's, it would seem like there is certainly no question with regard to the, the board's history and the existing bylaw with regard to investigating complaints of a butters. The issue of bringing in landfill material has caused the building commissioner some, some concern as to how enforceable that is, even though I know the board has historically permitted fill under that particular, but, general bylaw, earth removal or bylaw, so, so realistically, kind of choosing the right approach for the board to follow up this complaint is, is a little challenging, but the existing bylaw with, that is listed here is one we propose that we seek at this time to, to use as an, as a tool to investigate this complaint. If it turns out that there are other bylaw implications, then we can deal with those at the time. The bylaw in question does require an investigation by the board before you even ask, call for a public hearing, as far as deeming any necessary provisions or changes in behavior, so we have to do an investigation before we can actually even have a hearing, so.
And so in order for you to do that, you're, you're required us to vote, to investigate?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
If not, I'll accept a motion. Motion by Mr. Burbine.
I'll second.
Mr. Deion. Any further discussion? Kenny?
And what's the motion, to investigate?
Yes.
On that particular section of the bylaw, section 98.
How do we go about investigating, who does the investigation?
Administration, I think.
Unless there's any volunteers, that would be us, in conjunction with our building, building department, planning department, health, whomever would be involved.
I guess my, pardon my motion, would be to, and to report back at our next, is our next Board of Selectmen's meeting, I'd give you enough time to do that?
That would be fine. Yes.
Okay.
What meeting tomorrow night?
No.
Okay. Item number five is town manager. Oh, okay. Any of your abbotus like to speak? You don't have to, it's just, that's fine. Yep, thank you. Okay, so I had a motion by Mr. Burbine, second by Mr. Deion. Any further discussion? Kenny, again?
The zoning board going to be involved in the investigation, because it's zoning bylaw, correct?
Yeah, it's actually not a zoning bylaw, it's a general bylaw with, that involves just, and authorizes the selectmen to follow up on constituent complaints, basically, so there may be some zoning bylaws that are implicated when we look into it further, though.
Thank you. Okay. Any further comment? Kenny? One more time.
Aye.
If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that's unanimous. Thank you. Item number five is town manager's evaluation. As you know, it requires us to evaluate our town manager, and the process we followed was, we had mutually agreed on a form that was filled out by everybody, forwarded to me, and we spoke, I had spoken with Rick, and we, I summarized, calculated all the returns, and came up with the following, I'd just like to read this, I had to provide the town manager with the summaries. Contract requires the Board of Selectmen to complete an annual performance review of the town manager. The mutually agreed upon evaluation form included areas such as supervision, fiscal management, policy, execution, in relations with various boards, commissions, and community. My colleagues and I gave above-average rating to the town manager and his overall performance. We also acknowledged that Rick has only been on the job for six months. The highest marks were within regards to Rick's calm composure and his ability to solve problems without letting issues get out of control. I would like to thank my fellow members for their thoughtful input into the process and to congratulate and commend Rick on his performance. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you. And obviously, a lot of the issues that, a lot of the criteria that we're dealing with, there hasn't really been much of an opportunity yet for any of us to participate in, so I think by the end of next year, you should have, hopefully, something better to work with, but, hopefully, but I thank you, and I will say, it has been an interesting returning here after 17 years somewhere else, and it's amazing how at home, everybody here has made me feel almost right away, so I appreciate that. There are some just outstanding department heads in this town, but I, there's obviously a lot we can do, I think, to work together a little more effectively, and some of the goals that the board have will help us do that, too, so, so I look forward to it.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
And just on a side note to that, Rick, I've been talking to some of my colleagues, down the road, we would like to set up another meeting with goals and objectives, give us something that we can mutually agree to work forward to, so we would like to get that done.
No, I, and I would agree, and I think, you know, generally, on an annual basis, and we can, we can pick a time of year where that would, that would work best. we can, we can pick a time of year where that would, that would work best. Some of them that were already outlined, as you know, are ongoing, continuous.
Correct, yeah.
And some are more, you know, shorter-term project-related. So having, having something that's annually, or at least close to annual, would be, would be, would be good. And we can figure out what timeframe works best between whoever the chairman is, after April, and me.
Thank God. Item fi, item five, item six is town manager's report, please.
Yeah, I, as some of you have probably had a chance to read the written summary that I gave you, unfortunately, because of our other responsibilities, I could not get that out to you Friday. Some of the things I'd like to just highlight quickly, as you've been following the Memorial Arch project, we do have, we are in a position where the low bidder would put us over the, the amount appropriated by the town. There is some reason to believe that, that rebidding this would, would give us a better financial outcome. But until we do that, we, we're not, we can't say that for certain. We would like to, we intend to get that going this week. We already have the bid specs, we just have to go through the, the legal requirements to put that back out. As you know, we'd like to get that, the masonry work going this spring, so the timeline's getting short. Unfortunately, we weren't able to bring it in under budget. I'm not sure what the process was for determining what the, the appropriate budget was, when the article was passed initially, so I can't really speak to that. But that's the status, and hopefully, it won't have too big an impact on the timeframe we were already looking at. Number two, the, I met with the Finance Committee, distributed their budget material to them last week. By the end of the week, we'll have budget material for the entire Board. We do not have a proposed budget from the School Committee yet. They were looking to peer it down somewhat before they even sent it to us, which is, which makes sense. The major issue, as we've already alluded to, is the local aid budget, and the governor's proposal for local aid is effectively zero increase, effectively. There's very little increase, no increase in unrestricted local government aid, and very little increase in Chapter 70. Of about $100,000 overall increase in aid, $60,000 of that is for veterans' benefits, the percentage the state requires to, to refund to the town. So effectively, it is a zero increase when push comes to shove. So it's a, early in the budget, state budget process, however, it doesn't certainly give us a lot of comfort this early in, in our deliberations locally, so. Because of that, it doesn't, until we have a school proposal, to provide you a summary document is rather irrelevant, too. So as soon as we have the school proposal, which we should get this week, we can provide you with a summary, at least in terms of budget proposals. Unfortunately, I think we're probably going to be looking at a situation that's a little bit closer to the conceptual discussion we had a couple of weeks ago, in terms of where the budget process is going this year, in terms of minimal operating growth. The impact that that will have on departments is obviously going to be a problem for, that we'll have to discuss. Moving down my list here, the, probably the first, but possibly the second meeting in February, we'll be asking you to sign off on the submission of a proposal, proposal to the Office of Veterans Affairs to form a region with the town of Whitman. You know, this has obviously been an ongoing issue. One of the things we've been able to get is verbal approval for the administrative setup, which is a little different from that, which is outlined by the Department of Veterans Affairs. We think we could probably get a better bang for the buck with a slightly different variation. So you'll be looking, you can look forward to that. Probably your first meeting, if not your second meeting in February. The goal is to have approval from the state in, by the end of March. We are told the turnaround is very quick, so that it gives us three months to set up our administrative structure for that.
I just might comment on that. Being a veteran, it's, it's a very genuine concern that if, if, and when we do this, that we're able to provide better service. And that's what I think the, the goal, or I would support, is as long as we can provide a better service to the veterans that need it, I would wholeheartedly endorse that.
Right. And one of the administrative variations from what's, what is set forth by the Department of Veterans Affairs, is that rather than having one full-time agent and one full-time administrative secretary by whatever title, we're looking to have a full-time agent and a part-time agent slash administrative professional in another, in addition to another part-time administrative person. That way, we have technically two certified veterans' agents available all the time. So the Department of Veterans Affairs, at least verbally, was very receptive to that proposal. So, so we think we can, we can do a, a better job than both of us are able to do right now, in terms of coverage, and certainly administratively.
Sure, thank you.
And again, that's not, that's not, that's not a, meant any way to denigrate what's been going on in either community, but clearly, you know, the world of technology, et cetera, has moved on, and to have the right administrative capacity in place is, is more important than it was 15, 20 years ago, so. And then I have just two quick issues regarding the school building project. The school superintendent has, and the chairman of the school building committee and our representatives have asked, have gone to MSBA, and MSBA has asked for some changes to the submission. They're looking for more detail on a number of areas before they put us in the pipeline for approval, which is going to require another joint vote by the School Committee and the Board of Selectmen. And the school superintendent is asking if the Board of Selectmen would be, if we could get a quorum of the Board available in a meeting for February 6th, which is a Thursday night, in order to approve the new application. Substantively, nothing will change, it's just the level of detail they're looking for that has not been historically required. So if you could check your, we will follow up with an email to you tomorrow, if you'd like to check, check your schedules and let us know if that can work. And then finally, it is the suggestion of the Building Committee Chairman, also in the School Superintendent, that we set up a meeting, just an internal meeting with representatives of various boards and commissions, who would be in, whether conservation, planning, any board or commission that would be involved in permitting of the facility to try, so that they are up to date on the project, what is likely to happen, what the likely timeframe will be, and what, so that they can provide any input as to what requirements they might have. So that's a, probably be, be an internal meeting, obviously not a meeting of boards, quorums, but we'll let you know when that happens. And obviously, as two of you are on the Building Committee, you'll be informed anyway, so.
Okay.
And was there anything else? I think that's all at this point.
All right, thank you. Questions?
I just, I have one. On the landfill capping, I don't know if you thought about getting Mr. Wright back in, because as I recall, last year, the sampling that was happening there, both water and air were proving positive. In other words, they weren't detecting any sort of pollutants, and-
Right.
-there seemed to be maybe an opportunity to move forward with less expense-
Right.
-and continual monitoring?
I'd almost suspect you, you didn't read my update, did you? I just handed it out to you before the, attached to the update is just a spreadsheet about the goals and objectives to date.
Right.
And we did, you're exactly right. We, our consultant, Stephen Wright, did mention that, suggested that the end of January or the beginning of February would be a good time for him to come in after he gets feedback from the state as to the comprehensive assessment report that was filed on behalf of the town. He has not got feedback yet, but he expects that very soon. So our goal is to have him in here, hopefully in February, to give you that report verbally, so. And I just changed that today, so I can't hold that against you, so.
That, that would be something good to know as soon as we can, because it might affect some people's decision on the school, you know, because you freeze up a lot, there's a potential this could cost millions to cap it. And there's also potential that it would not cost much at all. So having that monetary figure available for the school, school vote, I think is a good thing to have, so.
Okay. And again, keep in mind that the, the, the timing, the timetable for having our engineer in is, again, after the state has rendered some opinion to him with regard to the submission of the comprehensive assessment report. So they haven't been before that, would, would kind of be, some, I don't want to call it a waste of time, but certainly would not be as productive as we would like it to be, so.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Number seven is public comment. Come on, somebody's got to have something to say. And number eight, at 10 past 7, is a motion to adjourn.
Still one meeting, and Kevin's not here. I was in such a hurry.
That may indicate something.
I think, I think he just texted in his motion to adjourn, though, in case I'm a little slow on the trigger.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I have a motion by Mr. Burbine, seconded by Mr. Coyle. All in favor, all oppose? It's unanimous. Thank you.